All right. Good afternoon. It's May 3, 2023. It's 12:30 PM. And this is the annual review of the warrant. My name is John Codere. I'm the new town manager. So I've been here for a few weeks. So luckily, I have up here with me several staff who can help me out if we get caught on anything, or if I get caught on anything, they have the answers, I'm sure. But if we will, why don't we have people introduce themselves? We'll start down here with Marie.
So my name is Marie Almodovar, the current Assistant Finance Director.
I'm Chris Gallagher. I'm the Public Works Director.
George Sam here, the Finance Director.
And I'm Paige Duncan, the Director of Land Use and Economic Development.
So that's the team for today. And just by way of orientation for folks, there are a few documents that we're going to be referring to today. First and foremost is the Town Meeting Warrant. So that booklet is available here at the table. The second document we're going to refer to potentially is the Advisory Committee's Annual Report. This is their recommendations to Town Meeting. And then last but not least, we have a handout from the Planning Board to discuss and help orient people on the zoning articles 12 through 17, which Paige will be speaking to. So in terms of the purpose of the meeting today, it's not to debate the articles. It's really a chance for people to get accustomed to the warrant, ask questions, obtain information. As you know, the debate and votes will take place on the actual, an actual Town Meeting. Town Meeting this year is on May 8 at 7:30, and that is in the Foxborough High School Auditorium. So in terms of the warrant today, we're going to walk through. We have 23 articles, and we're going to walk through. And as we go through each article, I'll pause, and if there's any questions, we'll take a moment to answer those questions as best we can. So if you open up, the first couple of articles are pretty routine, standard articles. Article one is just having the town clerk will stand up and give you an update in terms of the results of the election. As most of you know, there were no contested races, so there's not a lot of suspense there in terms of the outcome. But Bob Cutler will make a report at Town Meeting. Article two is to hear reports of officers, town officers. Again, this is up to the moderator if anybody steps forward and has a report to make. It's my understanding that oftentimes Article two and Article three, which is Report of Committees, are often moved through quickly if there are no reports to be heard. So that brings us to our first actionable item, and that's Article four. Article four is the overall budget for the town of Foxborough. And so within the warrant document itself is a detailed line item of all the various departmental budgets. And I think it's important to point out when you look at that document and you go through it, that it includes not just the general government departments, but it includes the school department, the regional school, the southeastern regional school, as well as the enterprise funds. So we have two enterprise funds. We have a water and sewer enterprise fund. So in total, the entire budget, general fund and enterprise funds, is $93,413,089. And its total, that is about a 2-point, I'm sorry, a 3.29% increase. So I'll just pause for a second there in case there are any questions with regard to the operating budget. No? Very good. Next up, we have Article five. Article five is the annual capital budget. So just for viewers at home, or folks who may not be involved in the process in any detail, Foxborough, like most municipalities, has a six-year or five-year capital improvement plan, where we look at what are all the significant capital projects that we might undertake over the next five years. Now, to be a capital project or to qualify for inclusion, you need to have a useful life of five years or more, and have a minimum value of $25,000 or more. Typically, these are large-ticket items, physical assets, so equipment, apparatus, infrastructure, and building improvements. So under Article five, what you have, as I said, typically, we have a five-year plan. That's the capital improvement plan. And then what we refer to as the capital budget are the projects that are coming up for funding in this fiscal cycle. So these are the projects that are coming forward to Town Meeting for your approval. And if you look on page eight of your warrant booklet, you can see that there's $200,000 for information systems. There's $120,000 to the finance department. This is for the five-year state-mandated revaluation work that needs to be done. We've got $49,844 for the lease for the tasers for the police department. Then under the fire department, there's a engine and a couple of ambulances that are being funded. These are leases. Then the school department, actually, if you look on page nine, there's a little bit more detail of the specific projects. So under the school department, you've got computer software replacement. There are two replacement buses that are in the capital budget for the schools. On an annual basis, they try to replace three each year, and that helps cycle them out on roughly a 10-year schedule. And then they've got some copier and music equipment replacements. Then if you come down to Public Works, there's a street sweeper in there, replacing a 1-ton dump truck. It's a backhoe replacement, a wing mower, and an irrigation system. In addition, there's some road reconstruction funding in there. You'll see an acronym called, it's titled TNC, and that is Transportation Network Company. Basically, what happens is any operation of Uber or Lyft in our community, there's a very small surcharge that comes back to the community. It must be essentially used to improve roadways. So it's $10,000. Not a lot of money, but every little bit helps. Then you enter into the water and sewer enterprise funds. So there's water main replacements, PFAS treatment plant, plant design, $785,000, Chevy 1-ton dump replacement, and two Chevy utility truck replacements. And last but not least, under sewer, you've got a 1-ton and a 1-ton utility truck replacement. Now, the thing to be pointed out here that I think is probably of most interest to the residents is the town has done a very good job of having a free cash policy and an approach to how you deal with a lot of your smaller equipment. And if you look on page nine, on the right-hand column, you'll see titled Funding Sources. The best thing about these projects that are coming forward to you is they make use of available funds. So free cash is essentially budget surplus from the prior year. Ambulance receipts, these are funds, these are funds that we raise based on charging ambulance fees. So when the fire department goes out, they do an ambulance run, they build the insurance company, the insurance company pays the town. We hold those funds in a revolving fund, and we use it to replace apparatus, which is a great program. So as you look at all of these projects, with the exception of probably the water and sewer receipts, water and sewer receipts, so out of the revenues from the fees that people pay to have water and sewer services, those are funding those projects. But the balance of these other ones are being funded with available funds or revolving fund revenue, which means these will be approved at Town Meeting, and there will be no additional tax impact. So it's a very conservative way to move forward and replace your capital. It's an effective program, and you know, I commend the town on the job that they've done and their planning. Are there any questions on the capital? No? Very good. We'll move on to Article six. So Article six is a bit of a housekeeping article. This, under Massachusetts state law, it's chapter, general law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, are the revolving funds that are established for the various departmental operations, where typically it's program fees. So a service is offered, a fee is paid, that fee is captured in a revolving fund and held outside of the general fund, and it's used to offset and pay for those programs. So what we are required to do by statute on an annual basis, by Town Meeting, is to set the limits of how much money can flow through those revolving funds. The majority of all expenditures in the town will go through Town Meeting and be appropriated. This is one of those areas where those revolving funds actually are sort of an off-budget revenue source. And so for transparency and clarity, these need to be reauthorized at a spending limit each year by Town Meeting. So that's what Article five does. Article 17 is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to move forward. I was going to write to 17 and hand it over to Paige for a zoning article. I'm sorry. Thank you. Article seven, Article seven is an authorization for $14 million for a water treatment facility for PFAS. I might hand it over to Chris for a moment if you wanted to speak to that particular article, Chris.
Sure. So EPA has, and DEP have set a limit for PFAS chemicals. We are close to the limit for mass DEP. EPA is actually reducing that limit to four parts per trillion, which will effectively trigger all of our water sources to need PFAS treatment. So we are looking at our first PFAS treatment plant. We have, in the capital, design money, we have applied for the state revolving fund for the construction of that first PFAS treatment plant. The estimate is around $14 million. We were actually approved for this upcoming fiscal year for that appropriation from SRF. So we need to formally accept that at Town Meeting. So what will happen is we'll do the design through this upcoming fiscal year. Next spring, early summer, we'll be ready to start building that plant. We will take the money from the state, pay the contractor. When the contract is done, when the project is complete, we will start repaying that at a 0% interest rate back to the state over 20 years.
Just a clarification, is it a 0% or a 2% interest rate?
The PFAS has been designated as 0% interest.
Excellent.
We have one question.
Yes.
What does that stand for?
So PFAS is a series of chemicals. They're called forever chemicals that have been found in everything from firefighter's foam to Teflon to Gore-Tex, microwave popcorn bags. It's a series of actually over 5,000 chemicals that have been in use for the better part of the last 50 years. They are now in the ground from a variety of different sources, leaching in through landfills, septic systems. We now have to treat that in the water system to make sure that it's not getting to the public to be consumed. So we will be, we are working on our first treatment plant, which is our chestnut plant. That's our biggest producing well location. So that's the most water we get in our three locations in town. And we're working on building that plant there so that we're treating the bulk of our water through that plant, through the PFAS treatment process.
Okay. Yes, Jack?
Yeah, because a number of towns in the state have received grants to pay for at least a significant part of the PFAS treatment. That was not available to you?
So we did apply through the Congressman's earmark program. We did not get accepted this round. So if that does come back around a year from now, we will, you know, look at the options and apply again if that is an option. So we have not been awarded money for that at this time, but we will keep an eye on it. That's the one, one of the few locations to get money for water system improvements is through that earmark program with the Congressman's Office.
This is really the first of several PFAS treatments that you're going to be doing?
Correct.
Each one, you would be excessively qualified.
Correct.
Yeah. So one of the things that's great as you lay out your capital plans, and you don't just sort of come up with a list each year, but as you try to plan these things out, one of the benefits of that is it allows you time to seek out grant funding. So if a project is in a five-year capital plan, and gives you several years to look for grant funding, and it'll either reduce that cost, or sometimes it'll eliminate a project altogether out of the plan, or allow you to do it without having to come up with local dollars. But PFAS is, as you probably know, it's one of the biggest issues right now. And there's a lot of talk at the federal level for trying to help communities of all sizes deal with this significant cost. So in the meantime, like you said, this is, this is something we're going to be dealing with for the foreseeable future. This is the first step of many to start to manage this, so.
And this is also something that, you know, the Water and Sewer Commission is taking kind of head-on. We are building it into the rate structure as well. So when, again, as we look at the water and sewer rates, we're looking at how do we phase this into that so that we're not hitting the ratepayers with a 50% increase, you know, all at one time. So we are working, and again, the long-term capital planning is trying to phase that in to that rate structure so that it's not one hit after the next. So we are looking at that as well. You know, there are litigation options. There are some towns that are now in litigation, mass DEP. The state has actually filed litigation against some of the larger companies, DuPont and 3M, who are the producers of these chemicals. So that is something we're exploring as well, is do we get into that, follow in those court cases to see what those results could look like as well.
Right. It'd be similar to the OPEB settlements, where the towns have all received money from the OPEB, not OPEB, opioid manufacturers. So it would be something similar. So we'll review all options as we move forward. Any other questions on that, Article seven? Moving on, Article eight, this is sort of a sister article to Article six. So Article six is reauthorizing your, the town's revolving funds for the upcoming fiscal 2024. Article eight is a modification to the fiscal 2023. This is the fiscal year that we're in right now for the authorization of the spending limit for the Council on Aging. So this is a positive thing. Again, this isn't, these aren't tax dollars. These are program fees that flow through to offset the costs of providing programs. In the case of the Council on Aging, they've done such a great job of expanding and adding programs, in particular, some nice trips for seniors. It just means they're taking in and flowing more fees. So in order to be in compliance with Mass General Law, that spending limit needs to be increased in the current fiscal year. So again, this is actually a positive thing. It means we're doing a lot more in terms of programming, so more monies are flowing through. And so we just need to modify that fiscal '23 spending authorization. Are there any questions on Article eight? No? And by the way, I did want to mention, I did mention at the beginning, the Advisory Committee recommendation, their report. So you can see whether or not they're supporting or not supporting an article, if referred to that handout. For those of you that might be watching this at home, I also want to remind folks that the warrant booklet, the Advisory Committee's report, the budget, as well as the annual report, these are all available on the town's homepage. So if you go on there, you can, you can see all those documents and download them. The physical documents are available at the senior center, at Town Hall, and at the library as well. So if you want to come by and pick up a physical copy, I should also put in a plug. Under Article two, we mentioned the annual report. This is a beautiful document, award-winning document. Christina Metcalf from the manager's office lays this thing together. This thing has won the top award through the Mass Municipal Association, where they're judged on readability, content, layout. So it's great information about the town. It's laid out beautifully. And if you want to know what happened in Foxborough in the prior year, I highly recommend you take, pick that up and give it a, and give it a read. It's a great document. Moving on, we have Article nine. This is the first of three citizens petitions. So citizens petitions come forward through a petition process. So these aren't articles that came forward through departments or official town boards or committees. Under the, under the bylaws in the charter, residents are able to submit articles to be discussed at Town Meeting. Article nine is an article to see if the town will allocate a minimum of 40% of their Chapter 90. These are state transportation funds that come to the town of Foxborough. If we dedicate a minimum of 40% of those funds to sidewalk construction and reconstruction. So that's a citizen's petition. That article was discussed at length at the Advisory Committee meeting and would be discussed again at Town Meeting. The article would be presented and spoken to by the petitioner. Article 10 is another citizen's petition. This one here is going to see if the Town Meeting wishes to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 9D. What this article does is it requires the town to pay for half of the premium cost payable to surviving spouses of an employee. So as, if you meet certain criteria and you retire from the town, you are able to continue to participate in the town's health insurance, paying your share of it. When you retire, you're able to continue that. So if you're on, say, a family plan for you and your spouse after you retired, if you were then, if the employee were to deceased, then the spouse no longer is eligible. They'd have to fund, if they wanted to stay on, 100% of that cost. So again, this is a citizen's petition to adopt this section of Mass General Law, which would require the town to pay half of that expense. Article 11 is again, another citizen's petition pertaining to sidewalks. So these are complete streets. The town participates in the state's Complete Street Program. This is a grant program whereby we've done an assessment of all of our sidewalk areas. You look at gap analysis, where can you put new sidewalks, as well as, you know, multimodal transportation, bike lanes, and things of that nature. So there is a list of priority projects that are contained through that process that are approved by Mass DOT. The citizen's petition is seeking funding for several specific projects that are contained on that list. My understanding through the motions is that the petitioner is seeking $1 million. At least that's what the initial motion is for those projects. Again, these are three citizen's petitions that will be spoken to by the folks that have submitted those petitions and be taken up at Town Meeting. Moving forward now, Articles 12 through, I believe, 17. These are zoning articles that are coming forward, and I'm going to hand it over to Paige Duncan, our Director of Planning and Land Use, and she'll walk you through those. And again, just by way of reference, as Paige is going to probably walk you through her handout here, which sometimes zoning can be a little bit dense when you're looking at use, you know, use tables and trying to figure out a couple of changes, what they actually mean. So Paige is going to kind of explain this in straightforward layperson's talk and explain to you what it is that each of these articles is trying to accomplish, and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, beginning on Article 12, I'll turn it over to Paige.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I've got the task of trying to explain a very dense zoning article. And I will say that my own planning board struggled with it. So that's why we did do that explanatory handout. The handout from the planning board is truly just a summary. It's not, it's not saying what the warrant says. So they're meant to complement one another. So, but let me give you a little background. So Article 12, you'll see a lot of words. And let me give you the gist of it. I don't know anybody who was around last summer, probably heard about the big warehouse project and trucking terminal proposed out on Route One. Got a little bit of attention last summer. And that kind of brought to light to the planning board and to staff that right now, the way our zoning bylaw is written, we allow warehouses, but we don't actually define a warehouse use, and we don't have a standalone warehouse use in our use table. So I started digging a little bit more and discovered that most of the warehouses here in town today were permitted, you know, years ago through an interpretation. Like, it meets the definition, but it's not the definition of warehouse. It can cover a bunch of business uses. So it kind of fell under that category and was by right oftentimes. So the planning board would have to approve it. They couldn't put special conditions on it. This proposal that was, came last summer was under the one use that does list warehouse, but it's, the terminology is, let's see, let me find the right, what am I thinking, trucking terminal, warehouse, public warehouse, and general commodity. Those are what's currently, and there's actually a definition. And when you look at that definition, it actually is really attracting trucks. You know, it was, it's designed, in fact, that project had more than 100 trailer, tractor-trailer parking spaces, so it was a trucking terminal. So that gave us the chance to think about it. And, you know, no one in Foxborough or the planning board has no interest in prohibiting warehouses. We all know warehouse is important. You know, we all need to get our supplies and whatnot. What we got concerned about was the trucking component. And as we dug into it, we discovered that warehouses today aren't basically your grandpa's warehouses anymore. You know, warehouses have entered into, and that in my explanatory thing, you'll see a whole second page about what's the difference between a warehouse and a fulfillment center. So that's what we've discovered, is during our review, when you have a general, you know, 20, 30, 40-year-old non-definition of warehouse, you get stuck with a lot of uses. So basically, I have something here to read, is that basically, a warehouse, let me find it, we don't want to prohibit warehouses. It's very important. So I want to be really clear on that. But we don't want to attract e-commerce uses, things where you see those big facilities where they store goods, but they also package them up, get them ready to send to consumers. You might put them in all those little vans, and they're, you know, out and on. So we're trying to find an elegant way to make sure we still have warehouses, but make sure we don't attract trucking facilities and these sort of high-intensity transportation-oriented delivery services. So, and I'll just read this briefly, and it seems a little long, but I feel it's important for understanding, that warehouses and fulfillment centers are often thought of as similar, and the words are used interchangeably. In reality, though, they are quite different. While both fulfillment centers and warehouses are large buildings that store inventory for businesses that sell products, that's pretty much where the similarities end. A warehouse usually refers to a building where goods and products are stored for an extended period of time. It's a place designed to store or house a business's inventory in bulk until it's needed. So if you walk into a warehouse, you're going to see high shelves stacked with many products, force lifts, driving around, moving containers. Fulfillment centers can do that same thing. They act as a warehouse. However, they do not double as a fulfillment center. So it's kind of like one can't be the other. But warehouses end up being, like, a fulfillment center can fit in our current use table, unfortunately. So what we're trying to do is to ensure that we won't end up with those high-traffic-generating, storage-and-delivery-service uses. But we will allow, obviously, our local businesses to store their products. So that's what this proposal is going to do. We do realize that trucks are always going to come into town, but we, the planning board felt that Foxborough doesn't need to be sort of a trucking mecca or a hub where we attract all these tractor-trailers as their base of operation, and then, and/or we have all the little vans coming out. We've seen towns like Bellingham, Milford, they're all having a lot of trouble with all of this. So that is the goal of this zoning article. It's a lot of words. It's a lot of complicated, because we don't want to delete a use until we replace it. So I had to do it in like layers, where it's like, we create this new definition of warehouse, we create the new use table for warehouse, and then we go ahead and delete the other stuff. So hopefully, that explains it. Does anybody have any questions on Article 12?
So, for example, where does Amazon, for example, fit in that scenario?
They'd be more like a fulfillment center.
A fulfillment?
We don't, we're not looking to attract that type of use.
Okay. Because that way, I've got a picture in my head of what we're talking about.
Yes, you're welcome. Anyone, yeah, Jack?
If I were a selfish Foxborough, I would ask that for every 100 acres of industrial land, I would want to put high-value, I mean, product, buildings there or uses there. Warehouses and fulfillment centers don't meet that criteria. I understand that necessary in this world, particularly in the world as we are now evolving, I'd like to put Mansfield.
Mm-hmm.
How do we get higher value of our limited space? Does this do that effectively? Can it be done better?
Well, I don't, I mean, what we can control, obviously, is the zoning, which is what we're doing. You know, I guess it depends on, so it's interesting, because I'm having conflicting thoughts about it, because I actually spoke it to a market professional last summer during this project on Route One. And they said that the, and again, it's a little different, but the market was so strong for these warehouse industrial users that it was actually outperforming the office uses. So the value, so that's that tough thing is right now, it can be economy-dependent. Right now, before a little bit of the Amazon crash, you know, that was the hot, that was the high value. Now, you might not get the finishes, but you're going to get some pretty high-value components to these buildings. So I guess I question whether that's true, whether warehouse and fulfillment centers aren't high value in scheme of our current economy. That said, I think we want to be sure not to hurt our local economy and our local businesses by not allowing them to store their goods. So that's why we don't want to get rid of warehouses. It's important for them. It's important for them. But we don't want to necessarily attract these high-volume traffic generators, so I think that's what this article is trying to differentiate. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's.
No, no, you know, there is no answer, but I, I go back a couple, twenty years, and the craft organization that owned a lot of land across from the stadium, we're going to put in R and D centers, places that people with big paychecks will work. And of course, that failed. You know, we have great parking.
They're still trying, they haven't given up, just so you know. They're, they're still working on it.
But the contrast, that contrast is what I'm coming back to. Not that the R and D center is what we necessarily going to get or even want, but there's a big spread.
Yeah, yeah, we do have a problem, and Route One is a challenge for us in that the parking lots generate a lot of revenue for their owners, and unfortunately, that's a disincentive for high-value commercial development, because it costs money to develop, and then you got to run it and operate and all that, whereas, especially when you have, you know, Tom Brady and the twenty years we just had, those parking lot owners had very minimal expenses, and they had a lot of events. So that's, I think, a market thing that it's, we're hard pressed. I mean, we changed the zoning back in 2018 out on Route One. We allow R and D by right, we allow hotels and motels by right. I mean, we are poised. It's all market-based at this point, so we're ready. This is, we're waiting for the market, and, you know, we'll have to see what happens over the next ten years with the stadium parking and whether those satellite lots remain in play. All right, any more questions on Article Twelve? Okay. Thirteen, this is, these are some definitions. Three of them are new, and one's an amendment. The reason for these is really the zoning board chair and the building commissioner had worked on these to kind of clarify, for example, the definition of setback. That definition basically is codifying the practice that's already in place, but, you know, we realized we don't have a definition of setback in our zoning bylaw, so they wanted to add that. Auto graveyard, tattoo parlor, again, uses that are listed in our use table but not defined. So if someone goes to, say, the building commissioner, "Well, what is that?", he can't necessarily say, he has to go to Webster's Dictionary. So this just makes life better when we all kind of have the same playing field and it's very transparent. The other, we are proposing to amend one definition in this article, and that would be junkyard. Again, just to make it clear, crystal clear for future as to what is a junkyard and, you know, how it can be enforced in the future. Any questions on Article Three and the definitions? Okay. Limited site plan review. So this is, state law limits what the planning board's scope is allowed to be on certain uses. Those are called, quote-unquote, exempt uses under Chapter Forty-A, Section Three. Those include educational, religious, and childcare facilities. So basically, we can't prohibit those uses anywhere in town, and we can only look at certain components under review. It's been, there was a little question as to how to do that. Is it exempt use? Do we do administrative review? Do we do a review? So last year, we created a new process, and this is basically codifying it. So basically, anyone who's coming in with exempt use, rather than saying, "Oh, we're exempt, we don't have to do it", they go, "Oh, we do. We have to do limited site plan review." And it's very clear, very transparent, and several other communities had adopted similar, and they've gotten it through the Attorney General's Office, so it's just a level playing field, so we all know what the rules are for those exempt uses. Questions on that one? And then the next couple are kind of easy, too. Fifteen, that's a housekeeping article. It's literally just search and replace all references to Town Planner and use my new title, which is, what is it, Director of Land Use and Economic Development. So many words. So that's, that's that article. Any questions on that one? Okay. And then the special permit process. This was brought to light back in last summer as well, that there's this weird old provision, we think a throwback from decades ago, where if there's a special permit application only in S one, that's out on Route One, the applicant must go in front of this Board of Selectmen. And then, but it doesn't tell them what, for what. They go in front of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen has no, no jurisdiction, no vote. So it was really difficult, because of selectmen were in a position of, well, we really can't do or say anything about it, but the bylaw says we're supposed to talk to them about it. And then, you know, the planning board's like, well, the one's with jurisdiction. So this proposal is to eliminate what we believe to be an old throwback provision and to require that the applicants come meet with me and my department so that we can go through anything before the application. We felt that was a more appropriate place to go than the poor selectmen who kind of get thrown to the wolves and really can't say anything about it. So, so that's our proposal on Sixteen. Any questions on that one? Okay, last one, super easy. This is truly a typo. Back in, I don't even know when it was, 2013, the bylaw was re-codified, and again, last summer, when we're looking at that project, I think we looked at every word in the zoning bylaw, we discovered that was a reference to Paragraph D, when there's no such D. We look back and sure enough, that was, there used to be a Paragraph D, but it, it should be Section Ten Point Six Point Eight with the new renumbering of the warrant. So that's really all we're doing, is changing the numbers so that it's the right reference. Any questions on that one?
Back to John.
Thanks. And that's all I have. Back to John.
Actually, I'm going to kick it back to you again.
Oh, boy.
The next three, Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty came from you.
Okay, so Eighteen is Pratt, Pratt School Sewer District. I kind of should, probably should have done them on another order. That's okay, I just didn't grab one. So the Pratt School, for those that aren't familiar, it's, it's a little schoolhouse down off Community Way in East Foxborough. It's really cute. And we've had it for a while, it's been boarded up, it can't be used, it's in pretty bad disrepair. We've walked through it with facilities, we've walked through it with a few members. The town asset review committee has discussed it, and basically, oh, and the other thing is, is that it can only be used for a single-family home. So I had visions of like putting in four senior apartments or doing something like that, but honestly, given what we're all dealing with, you know, with the two FortyBs in town and the MBTA communities, it didn't seem like another Forty-B to allow housing down there would probably be the right time and place, so we kind of put a hold on that, and we're recommending, well, we're suggesting that the, the town meeting vote to dispose of it, the school, to sell it. Whether the selectmen, that will be actually their choice, you know, as to how they proceed with it, but this would give the selectman permission, select board, shall I say, permission to proceed with this. We did reach out to several local developers, and they did have interest in this lot. Again, it would just be a single-family lot. I don't know if they'd keep the building or if they'd get rid of the building, we don't know. Unfortunately, it's really big for a single-family home, and the way it sits on the lot isn't great. Then again, everybody would kind of think it would be neat to keep it, but it's kind of, so we don't know, and, and future discussions will be had, but that was put on the article. And then to go along with that is the article, that's Article Nineteen. Article Eighteen, I should have done them in a different order, is to include the Pratt School in the Sewer District, so that if someone does go to develop this in the future, they could tie into Sewer. If they choose, they might not do it, but it gives the option, because it is nearby. Any questions on the Pratt School either thing? Okay. And then, what is Twenty? Oh, Article Twenty. That, this one, I actually don't have much to do with it, but I did just see an email. We had, if I recall, we voted this a couple of years ago, and I think what, we, this proposal is the exact same voted a couple of years ago. I think what happened is we missed a step with the Historic District Commission to just like, they had to do a special vote or something. So we haven't changed the map at all over what was proposed a couple of years ago. We just need to clean up the process to make sure we approve it in an appropriate manner. So this is the current Baker Street Historic District as it exists today, and we're just trying to firm up the map so that it, we have a nice, clean, clear map, so I think that's it.
Thank you, Paige. Any questions before I proceed to Article Twenty-One? Great. So Article Twenty-One is a modification to annual town meeting time. So as you know, under the bylaw, town meeting takes place at seven-thirty. So the board, the select board had some discussion around that. At a prior meeting, the moderator came in, and they had a, a discussion in general about the timing of town meeting. So there's a lot of different schools of thought on, on town meeting time. You know, the idea is trying to move it a little bit earlier so that people can, you know, aren't there quite so late. So some towns have moved it up, you know, to six o'clock, and so again, one of the things that did come out of the discussion was a desire to have, you know, a, a time that is set in bylaw, so everybody knows what it is, but the thought was move it from seven-thirty to seven. That's the only change that's taking place here. Get started a little bit early, maybe finish a little earlier, and seven o'clock is, was discussed as a reasonable time where if people are traveling or commuting, they could probably get there by then. Seven-thirty, you know, by the time you get going, you're really getting rolling at quarter of or eight o'clock, it can make for a late evening. So that's the proposal, just to move town meeting up by a half an hour, just to help people make it a little bit more convenient for, for folks. That's the only change that's taking place in there. Any questions on Article Twenty-One? Great. Article Twenty-two, this is a, a nice programmatic enhancement. Article Twenty-two, under Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five-N, allows the town with town, allows the town of Foxborough with town meeting approval to establish a Veterans Property Tax Work-Off Program. Probably the best way to explain this, most people in this town are probably familiar with the Senior Tax Work-Off, so you can work for the town for up to fifteen hundred dollars off of your tax bill. Here at Town Hall, we have a, a lot of seniors that, that serve as greeters. It's a great service, it benefits the town, it allows the seniors to stay active, and compensates them for, for their time by reducing their tax bill by up to fifteen hundred dollars. Under Mass General Law, we have the ability to establish a similar program but for veterans. So to be in the Senior Tax Work-Off Program, you have to be a certain age. This program would require just a couple of things. Number one, you'd have to be a Foxborough resident. Two, you have to be a veteran, and that's defined in, in Mass General Law. You need to basically pay taxes in the home, in other words, you need to, this needs to be your primary home, very similar to the Senior Tax Work-Off Program. And you just have to produce a utility bill to prove that you're there. So if a veteran is in, is, is living in town, they don't have to be a senior, but if they would like to come and, similar to the other program that we run, do some, some work for the town for a reduction of up to fifteen hundred dollars in their tax bill, it allows the town the mechanism to do that. So again, it's a, it's a programmatic enhancement that I think benefits the town, but also might benefit a veteran who might be in transition, maybe coming back, maybe out of work or looking for work, but if they own a home and they have a tax bill, this is an easy way for them to reduce that liability for them.
How is this different from a Senior Tax Work-Off?
So the question is, how is it different from the Senior Tax Work-Off? The Senior Tax Work-Off, you need to be a senior. The Veterans Program, you don't have to necessarily be a senior.
It says.
Do you?
Oh, okay, I, now I get it. I just read that. My apologies.
Okay. So what it, what it does is that it just allows us, it's a similar program, allows us to open it up to benefit veterans. The reality is, is most veterans that would take advantage of this program are likely to be seniors who already qualify for the other one, but it allows us to fill that gap where there might be somebody who, who doesn't qualify, and we're able to help them out, and they're able to help us out. Yes?
Now, this is under a different Massachusetts General Law.
Yes.
From senior. So therefore, can you have double difference, a senior veteran?
No, my understanding is you can't. I did, I did ask that question this morning of our finance team. My understanding is that, no, you, it's one or the other. I think the benefit of this program is it, it helps fill a gap, it broadens the, you know, if you're not a senior.
I'm not speaking against.
Helps. Oh, no, no, I know you're not speaking against it. I'm just trying to explain, we're just trying to expand the eligibility to help out a veteran if we can.
Is there a, a cap on this as to accommodate?
Very similar, think of it almost identical to the other program. If you qualify as a veteran, it's up to fifteen hundred dollars, so similar.
But how many veterans could we accommodate?
I think we'd be able to accommodate any veterans that came forward.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Didn't you mention seven to ten you thought was going to be?
Yeah, yeah, our estimate was based on the current percentage of resident seniors who participated in the program, and we use that similar percentage to estimate how many veterans might possibly participate.
Right. We don't think there's going to be a large number, you know, but when it comes to these types of programs, to the people who take advantage of it, it matters to them.
Yes, it's a great idea.
So it's a good, it's a good program, so we hope people will support that at town meeting. Any other questions on Article Twenty-two? No? All right. The last article we have is Article Twenty-three, and this is to see if the town will vote to name the new pavilion at the Booth Playground located Eighty South Street, the Debbie Gardino Pavilion. Under the town's policy for naming public facilities, there's a process for that. The last step of that process is that it must be approved at town meeting. So what this article does is it brings the, that naming request to, to the final step for a town meeting approval, and if approved by the voters at town meeting, then that would be the new name for the new pavilion, so. Anybody have any questions on that? Again, this is a, a policy that we have to follow in, in the event that we want to name a public facility. Okay. So that is the full warrant, Twenty-three articles. I know we went through it fairly quickly, but, you know, if you look at the Advisory Committee's report, you know, there's a pretty good consistency in terms of what's being brought forward by the boards, committees, and the departments and the support of the Advisory Committee. I strongly recommend that you review their report. I think it's informative and, and gives you a little bit more background on some of these articles. So that's the warrant, that's the warrant review today. I appreciate you guys being so nice to me on my first cycle through. Nobody asked me any really tough ones, but, but no, in terms of, in terms of warrants, there's no major, you know, building projects or controversial items on there that I'm aware of, so it should be a good town meeting.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your attention. Oh, we got one.
I'll say two points of information.
Yes.
The first point is, the Advisory Committee, is that appointed by the moderator?
The Advisory Committee is appointed by the moderator. Up to fifteen people. Yes.
And my second question is not really an issue for me. It's more of an issue for the next generation, and it regards the use of a warrior logo for sports, I think. I don't have a problem with that, it's not my issue, but apparently it runs the next generation in a wrong way. Is that a question that could be put on the ballot?
At this point, it is not on this town meeting or on a, on a ballot that I'm aware of, so.
But in the future?
That would be, remain to be seen. I'm not sure what that process would be. Yeah, the first place to start with that would be to speak with the, the school committee, but, but as far as that process, I'm not sure what that would look like, but it's not on this, on this warrant for, for business for the town next week. Okay? Great, well, thank you all for your attention and your participation. Have a great day.